All right, I'll call the order of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, November 8th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Renaud?
Present.
Chair Waymeyer?
Present.
If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious heavenly Father, will we acknowledge your creation of this day, and we thank you, Lord, for it, and we choose to rejoice and be glad in it. Pray, Lord, you can grant wisdom to the leadership of our county, and, Lord, especially even now, our thoughts and prayers are with the families of those in Sutherland Springs. We pray for your mercy and watch care over those even now under surgery and recovering in hospital from the gunshot wounds of the massacre that occurred on Sunday there at First Baptist Church. Lord, we ask that you would not allow that soon to pass through our minds, and we continue to be in prayer not only for them but also for the leadership of our county here in Kansas. Lord, we love you and thank you for this day again, in Christ's precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do we have any correspondence and organizational business to report? None. Is there any public comment? Anybody signed up for public comment?
Nope.
Our consent agenda today would include approving the meeting minutes for November 1st meeting. There are no claim vouchers, there are no tax change orders. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes. Our first item of business is consider approving a, allowing a grant for the Health Department. Midge Ransome, our Health Department Director is here.
Morning, everyone. This is a, Kansas Health Foundation is providing new grants on impact and capacity building for local public health. This was an impact and capacity grant rewrote that will provide training on interviewing skills, which has carryover potential to working with our clients, things like that, as the capacity building portion. But the other half of that grant will allow us to obtain assistance in doing neighborhood surveying with permission with the families that will look at tobacco use, for one thing, which is reducing tobacco use is a, an objective of several of our grants. Chronic disease risk reduction, as well as pathways, Healthy Communities Initiative, all have tobacco reduction as a, as a required objective and a desirable objective. So we will be looking at tobacco use and the relationship with housing and poverty. It'll give us an opportunity to actually look at some of the housing issues we may have throughout the county. So the plan would be to, with, obviously with the residents' permission, to do some assessment of what the issues are. We are seeing lead poisoning, and so, for example, that would be one of the things with the older housing in our community. Is the paint peeling or is it being covered up? What's the situation there? So we'll be able to do several different things in this assessment with the funding from the Health Foundation. It'll allow us to have an incentive for participants that allow us to do that survey, as well as provide a stipend to college interns who are receiving in their college classes some training on interviewing skills and, and social issues. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Midge, I'm trying to read this real quick. Is the full $25,000 come to you, or is that just, we get just a share of that?
No, it's, it comes to us, but we will use it, we put in there $50 incentive for each family that participates or each housing resident, if you will, or household, I should say, plus a stipend for the interns that assist us. And as a part of that training, all of our staff, on-staff, will at least visit one or two homes to practice interviewing skills to help get to the root of problems, if you will, so.
So these, they'll be interviewing households who have, for instance, reported, like, lead poisoning or random, or?
Not necessarily. Yeah, it, we will do a, basically in each community, kind of a walkthrough of some of the housing that is obviously older, perhaps more dilapidated, if you will, that may have some issues. We do have some people who have reported issues to us. We certainly may reach out to them as well, but there, there tend to be some neighbor, older neighborhoods that have that kind of housing that poses plumbing risks or poses lead paint risks, those kinds of things.
Did you say this is the first time on this plan, or we haven't had this before?
No, this is new. Yeah, this is new. And it's a one-time, one-time thing, it's just for the assessment.
What will we do with this information?
So the idea is to look at what, what are the issues, and then, for example, if we find that people truly are, we do have a significant lead risk, we have 37% of our housing is older, that puts us in the lead paint risk category. So, you know, if we only find 5% that where the paint's chipping, then at least we know we need to target maybe those houses, but maybe all, maybe half of those houses really have a lead paint risk, then we would develop an implementation plan to address that issue. The other part is to have an idea of what are the, there is a connection between poverty, housing, and tobacco use. So we want to investigate if that truly exists in our community, as well as it has in some of the other studies throughout the nation that show that poverty increases tobacco use. We are looking at implementation for, or things that we might do to help encourage people not to use tobacco, excuse me, use tobacco. So what that plan is depends on what the assessment shows us.
Do you have any of this data currently? I mean?
Not locally, not locally, other than the general 37% of our houses are older, but is that what you mean?
Yeah, like adult usage of tobacco?
We do have that, and it's, we are higher than the state average in Franklin County. It's in the high teens of tobacco use. And while tobacco use is still an issue with teens or adolescents, which of course we're concerned about, or actually marijuana's probably overtaking it, but it has some of the same respiratory issues as tobacco, so there's a crossover there.
The salaries, Midge, that come out of this, that's indicated on the details, will those replace salaries, will those be in addition to their regular current salary?
They replace.
They replace salary money, okay.
On our staff?
Yes, yes, their staff, right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Midge? Then we should vote. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve allowing the Health Department to accept the Kansas Health Foundation Impact and Activities Grants?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes. All right, our second item of business also lies with you. It's an activities and income report for the Health Department.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is a little bit delayed for the quarter of July through September. We've been busy, and obviously with flu clinics and such, through September, and back-to-school puts us, is one of our busiest years, so also increases our income during that level. Most of the other programs are fairly steady. We went several months without communicable diseases, and then August and September, actually September hit, and communicable diseases just went crazy. So we've had a lot of case investigations to come, to, to do on various diseases, but nothing, nothing outbreak-wise. And then I, I just put on there some of the activities and services that we've provided. We're, continue to try to work with other community partners on providing information and seminars, such as with the Angel Care and First Variety Forums and those kinds of things, just to stay out in the public a little bit and keep that information flowing. Pathways is working hard on Work Well Kansas, which we have a team from Franklin County, so that's great, to encourage businesses to develop employee wellness plans, so that's moving full force with that. We installed bike racks and a repair station down on Walnut, which is, we actually took a picture, somebody actually used it, so yes, that's good. We're glad about that. And then, I believe I spoke about this before, the American Planning Association, the Kansas Chapter of the American Planning Association gave us, gave us the $7,000 for technical assistance, and Lisa Coke is doing that, and she's providing a spreadsheet of various projects that we might want to pursue based on our bicycle pedestrian plan, and what that might cost, and what we'd have to look at to actually get some of those things to happen. We don't have that final report yet, but I'll certainly share that when we do. And then the Nature Grant, which I know I spoke with you about, so. On the financial side, I'm excited because our carryover unpaid bills is very low, it continues to go down, so that we have very little outstanding billing at each quarter.
That includes Can Care?
Yes. So that's doing well. But we do have write-offs, and we have a little more, we have more write-offs this quarter. We, Tammy went through and looked back the two and a half years to see what was bad debt and what wasn't, we weren't able to collect on past, when we first went to Patagonia, we had some billing overlap that caused some real significant issues that we just weren't able to correct, and so we wrote some of that off to get it off the books. So most of that was flu shots, pneumonia shots, that we had to just write off. So that, the write-offs for this quarter were $6,629.12, and then I also have the insurance adjustments of $11,697.83. So I'd be glad to answer any questions or request approval of those write-offs.
Under WIC, you have new 155. Are those new?
New clients to the program, usually, well, it's either people who have moved in with children, young children, or new infants, or pregnant women that are coming into the program.
Is that high for a quarter?
No, it's probably about right.
Really?
Yeah.
All right.
What are you doing, school inspections?
School inspections are one of the three things mandated by statute, and Rob, now that we have Rob, he got right on that. Looks around at the school for, is there hot water in the, to the sinks in the bathrooms, for example? Has the furnace system or the heating air system been inspected as it should be? Not, we don't do that inspection, but we expect the school to have had it done, you know? Cleanliness, it's, it's a sanitary inspection. Are chemicals stored appropriately in the, in the labs? Are, you know, so vinegar and Clorox aren't side by side, you know, that would cause potential health risks. So it's just kind of a general inspection. The, the really good thing, and I've asked him to put together a report on what he has seen, we haven't got that, we haven't finished that yet. One of the really benefits of that is getting to know more school personnel and establishing that line of communication so that they feel more comfortable calling us if there is an issue of some kind, and, and we've been out to the schools for various issues this fall since the inspections took place, and so I, we're glad about that, to develop that relationship further.
Do all four school districts in the county have school nurses?
They have school nurses, well, they have, there's, they have hired school nurses except in one district, and she is not an RN, but she operates, she has to be supervised, but not on sta, not onsite, yeah.
We would need to vote to accept the report, because it contains the write-offs and insurance adjustments. Is there a motion to accept the Health Department report, including write-off and insurance adjustments?
I'll make a motion, we approve the report with write-offs.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
How's your office remodel plans?
We're kind of waiting to go through that bid together to get it out, so when we can get that together, we'll, where we are.
Are you seeing any numbers on flu yet? You said that mentioning flu shots was part of the write-offs, but?
We, because it's not reportable, we can't get solid numbers for our county, but there are reports of flu, and there's a report of something going around that's making people pretty sick that's not the flu, but we don't know what it is yet, it hasn't been tested, so, yeah. I mean, there's, it hit early, but there doesn't seem to be the heavy outbreak that we, we might have, but the good thing is, after it was in the paper, we got a slew of people in for flu shots earlier, which is really good. So if you haven't had it, everybody, come get your shot.
All right, thank you. Our third item of business also pertains to a grant. It is for hazardous materials preparedness, and the side of a business lies with the Emergency Management Department.
Good morning.
Good morning, Alan.
This is the grant that we talked about about six months ago for applying for. It is the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant that is a federal grant through Department of Transportation and funnels through the state and then down through the Local Emergency Planning Commission for our county. We applied to update the emergency operations plan and also our commodity flow study. The last commodity flow study that we did, 59 Highway, was not completed going north, so I think we'll see a change in, in that. We also have the Bakken oil now that's running on the rails down Burlington Northern, and so I think there'll be some changes to our rail commodities also. We went out for bid on three different contractors for this, for the grant requirements, and our contractor that we use for our local plans was the Low Bid and EFM Consulting, and that's who we'll be using if you approve to accept the, the grant. It's an 80-20 split, same requirements we've had the last few years, we've used this same grant for training, exercises, and I think even our last update to the emergency operations plan was done with this grant. And the 20% can be a soft match. So I don't anticipate any local funds being used, but we did put in our budget if we do need to use some of the, the funds. That 20% is just a little over $3,600.
Questions for Alan? I think this grant's been here every year I have, so, all right. Anyone like to make a motion to approve, make the grant application?
Make a motion, we approve to accept the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant?
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Fourth item of business is rezoning application. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you've noted, the next item is a request for the approval of a rezoning. This was filed by the Burning Ham Roberts. His primary purpose was to settle an estate. They are seeking to rezone the entire 20 acres, because the three acres that they're wanting to divide out and are seeking the R3A zoning on reduces the size of the tract to where it no longer meets the A2 requirement, so the entire site will have to be rezoned. Staff has reviewed this in accordance with our provisions for zoning and subdivision regulations. The Planning Commission entertained this matter earlier this year and have forwarded a recommendation to you to approve the rezoning request and direct staff to modify the official county zoning maps accordingly.
Everybody's looking at their attachments, none good. Any questions for Larry? None? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the rezoning application?
I'll make a motion, we approve the rezoning application 1709-1530.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
And Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
Our fifth item of business is also a rezoning application. Go ahead, Larry.
This request is filed by the Channons to rezone approximately 20 acres from an A1 to the A2 zone. This will also involve a, a boundary line adjustment, because they are going to merge an existing five-acre tract into the property that they're wanting to rezone, that's before you this morning. I think that's depicted probably very clearly on the map associated with the staff report. Anyway, the Planning Commission did give consideration of this, that matter, and have forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of the rezoning request, and have directed, would, excuse me, would direct staff then to modify the official zoning maps according to the recommendations of the Planning Commission. I really have nothing further to add at this time. There is an existing residence on the proposed tract, but the, the notion here would be to satisfy the requirements by allowing this land division, the remainder of that would be sold for agricultural purposes.
Straight forward, any questions for Larry? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the rezoning application?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve rezoning application 1706-1499.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, our sixth item of business pertains to purchasing tires and the accepting of a, awarding of a bid.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We faxed five bids out, as they were returned, bid number one used a substitution, which is not allowed, and is recommended that that bid be rejected, Cross Midwest Tire submitted the lowest and best bid for two through five, and it's recommended they be awarded. The request is a motion awarding tire bids two through five to Cross Midwest Tire and rejecting tire bid number one.
What, Jim, what do you actually mean by number one used a substitution? What?
In actual fact, the bid that we requested, the tire we requested a bid on is no longer furnished, and so they substituted a tire that is currently available. We will just go out individually for that particular tire and handle that in-house, because it'll be below my purchasing level. If we allowed substitutions, we could have tires all over the place.
Anyone like to make a motion to accept, approve awarding the tire bids to Cross Midwest Tire?
We've used them before, haven't we?
Of course.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
Our seventh item of business is also with the Public Works Department. Go ahead, Jim.
As you recall, Bridge number 17-11.8 on Pond Aegis west of Eisenhower, and was recently awarded funding from the off-system bridge program. It's necessary to prepare plans and specifications to go to a bid letting. The request is a motion to accept executing a proposal for Bridge 17-11.8 with Cook, Flat &amp; Strobel in the amount of $38,000. As you recall, earlier this year, I believe in June, we executed a contract for $21,000 to take the bridge through field check. That contract would be null and void in this [inaudible]. Also includes geologic investigation to determine the appropriate footings and abutment pile lengths.
Or testing.
Yes, sir. Anticipate there'll be at least three holes. Wounds required by the off-system bridge program. We will probably have one at each abutment and one, at least one of the piers. Probably drilled through the existing bridge.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Huh, that'd keep them out of the muck, wouldn't it? Say you let this for bids, how many bids did you end up getting on that?
No, it would be preparing plans so we can go to, so we can bid it. Funding doesn't become available until next October 1st.
But no matter who's paying for it, it'd be necessary, it wouldn't be for naught, even if somehow the funding went away, or we would need these to build a bridge regardless?
Yes, sir.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve contracting with Cooks, Flat, Strobel for engineering services?
Make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
Our eighth item of business is, pertains to purchasing a piece of equipment for the Public Works, Works Department.
The department's bucket assembly is mounted on a 1996 GMC Kodak with 90,665 miles. It began life in the recycling, went to, was offered as a patch truck, but height of the bed did not facilitate that. Put the chipper box on it and subsequently mounted a bucket. These truck, as you might imagine, is very tired, and the removal of the bucket assembly may improve its performance. The removed bucket assembly will be sold on Purple Wave. Reed Company LLC has a 2011 Freightliner bucket truck from West Star. Truck has 131,400 miles and is for sale for $58,500. Funding would be Road and Bridge Special Equipment, which has a balance of $180,020. The truck was brought up here from Weibo, and we were able to operate the truck in the yard. Mechanics were able to go over it, and it's our recommendation that we purchase the truck.
What kind of value would our bucket assembly have on Purple Wave, probably?
Maybe a thousand. Maybe a thousand.
Possibly. Depends on, we, we would need, we would need two bidders in order to drive it, drive it up.
Right. And the bucket truck we're getting has that assembly on it already?
Oh, yes, yes, and a utility, utility bed where we'll be able to store saws, saws and lock the compartments and not have to store them in, in the shop.
What are you gonna do with the old truck itself?
It's gonna continue to have the box for the chips and haul it, and pull the chipper. The new bucket- The new bucket truck doesn't facilitate putting the box on it, pulling the chipper behind it because it's a center mounted bucket.
Gotcha. And you use this for road clearance mostly?
We'll use it for trees.
Trees?
Yeah.
But the boom mower can't get this gets there?
Mm-hmm. It is a forty-foot working height for the bucket, and so, you know, six foot plus a pole saw, we'll be able, that's eight foot higher than our existing bucket.
Any other questions for Jim? Anyone like to make a motion to approve purchasing the bucket truck from Reed Company?
I just had one question, how does this affect our fleet of vehicles? We didn't discuss this truck with discussion vehicles.
It would, it would add one vehicle.
Is that right Derek?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. I mean, we discuss this every year, if I have time with Jim, he's pretty straightforward about what's in his fleet. And I think, you know, he, he's just always been direct about what he needs and what he can get rid of. So I'm not particularly concerned with Jim trying to, I guess, grow his fleet or I have no concern.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve his purchase of a West Star truck.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Waymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thanks Jim. That brings us to staff reports, Derek.
I, the title work for all of the parcels involved at sale is now, that's really the last step we are waiting on prior to actually filing the petition. So I have a far date because I'm not actually filing it, but I would expect that petition to be filed in the very near future. We obviously included all of the parcels, that would be within the city, and the only parcels that didn't end up on this tax sale, and the codes are one thing, but there are certain unknown parcels with unknown ownership, and we're talking little slivers of land. Some of them were on there, some of them, Croucher Abstract literally like could not trace the title. I mean, he was back in the eighteen hundreds and we just, I need to work with our attorney at Stevens brand to figure out what it is we want to do with those. But there will be a handful of those remaining, but we're cleaning a lot up in this sale. So definitely happy with the progress there. I've gotten a great value on that so far. Commissioner Howard, you mentioned, it's probably been two or three weeks ago now that you went to a Richmond City Council meeting, and they were talking about us maintaining their maintenance pursuant to a resolution that talked about, I don't know what the term was, but arterial roads or something. I found that resolution and I've talked to Jim about it. I have some concerns. The resolution is valid, but it talks about us maintaining roads. And Jim and I are gonna go down there, maybe as soon as today, but I'm intimately familiar with Richmond, and that road has been neglected for twenty years probably. And there's a difference between maintaining a road and giving Richmond to get out a jail free pass for twenty years of neglect. So in talking to Jim, and again, we're gonna go down, we're gonna take pictures, he's gonna give me his professional recommendation. But I think they're gonna have to put in some work on that road and get it back to a condition that we feel is adequate for maintenance, because there's really no, I mean, we wouldn't expend funds to maintain it in its current condition, because as you know, having been down there, I mean, it's just in need of a lot of work. So I don't know if that's something you want to communicate to them at the next meeting, if you want me to reach out to the mayor. I don't, you know, however you want to do that, but I think there is gonna need to be some discussion with the city.
Originally, when it first started being talked about was snow, basically, snow removal. So I don't know what the resolution said, but, you know, and then it has kind of evolved into maintaining the roads, so. I can, I can tell them that, or you get with me after you guys go down and see what you think and what.
Yeah, I can, I'll do that, Jim and I will go down and then I'll be in touch with you.
And they actually are just getting a new mayor after the elections last night. There's a new mayor that will be stepping in there, but he was also, has been a council member, so I, he's familiar with the conversations we've had on this before.
But what I'll probably do then is unless you tell me otherwise, you can, for the time being, just leave the case on. I'll look at what happens, and I will look and then you can disseminate that info, or if it's there, and we'll wait for more direction from you. Some logistics things, next week, as you all know, is the AC conference. Importantly, we're not gonna have a meeting a week from today. The intention is to still have a study session, however, prior to that, we have the canvas Monday. Typically, we have our canvases down at the old corp house, I would anticipate it being there. I believe we've agreed, it's not on here, but seven thirty is the start time with the study session immediately thereafter, so.
Coming back here for the study session.
That would be my intention, yeah. And then I believe everything else you have laid out there, as it stands, we have a commission meeting on the twenty-second, the day before Thanksgiving. You know, I work at for pleasure, if that's something that you want to talk about canceling, I, I could talk to Joy later today, but I don't think we have anything, I'm not anticipating anything incredibly pressing or that I can't move around if that were.
I, I won't be here the twenty-second, I'm leaving state for Thanksgiving, and we're gonna be leaving on the evening of the twenty-first. So I, whatever we decide to do, but I won't be here the twenty-second if we have the meeting, so.
Well, I'll be here regardless, so I'm certainly happy to do it, but I'm also, I certainly, I understand, like we, you know, that's day before Thanksgiving, and so I have absolutely no issue. And you don't have to, we don't have to make that decision today, but I'll probably be seeing, as I'm not gonna see you next Wednesday, or at least publicly here, probably will be pestering you about it, so. Commissioner Oglesby, you asked me for a date on the retreat. We've got December eleventh locked down, so we have the space and we're good to go on that date, so. Yesterday, I went to an FCDC meeting, got James here, if you have any questions for him, like James, if you would like to address the board, you're certainly welcome to. He's probably in a better position than me to do it, I think it's fairly business equal over there, but he's here for questions if you guys want to talk.
Give us a quick rundown of what's going on with FCDC, James.
Morning Commissioners, just kind of a quick update like we talked yesterday. As far as the marketing plan for Proximity Park, we are kind of wrapping up the first year of that plan that was approved by the board back in January. And so there's a few little pieces of it that, just the timing of things, might fall into the beginning of next year as far as when they're actually completed, but they're actually part of this year's plan. We're coming in right on budget with that, we might actually even be a little bit under budget when it's all said and done with for the, for the first year. So that's good for that. Obviously, we're gearing up for next year as well too. You know, the things that we were able to do this year, I think, really built a good foundation for what we're trying to do as far as getting our message out, not even just necessarily about specifically Proximity Park, but the county as a whole, you know, the things that we have available here as far as business climate, quality of life, things for our residents, you know, things of that nature. And so, excuse me, also gave an update that as we rolled out the Work Franklin County program at our annual meeting, I have been meeting with business partners as part of the next level funding campaign for that, and that's going extremely well. We're over two-thirds of our way to the, to the minimum goal that we set. And there's actually a number of businesses that I've already visited with, I'm just kind of waiting to hear back response. So I don't think it's gonna be an issue to get to that target market, or target mark, excuse me, to be able to fully implement that in January of twenty eighteen. And so, other than that, the executive board got first review of the proposed two thousand and eighteen budget for FCDC, and that'll move forward to the full board meeting that we'll have here in just, actually, next Thursday. So the full board will get to take a look at that and vote on that for next year. So I can answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Where's the holiday and development?
Good question. I just talked to Wendy over at the city about that the other day. They have submitted their application for demolition and for dirt work on the site. They are waiting on a few pieces of, the city's waiting on a few pieces of things. They've verified that the utilities have been shut off, which they need to do. They're waiting on the Kansas Gas Service to, you know, inform them that the gas has been shut off before they'll actually issue the permit. And then there's also a permit that comes from KDHE, KDHE, excuse me, that they need to get before they can actually start the dirt work. They're waiting on those two pieces before they can actually issue the demolition and the dirt work permit. So at least that portion of it can start. The plat on the, excuse me, the plat on it, at this point, has been approved. It sounds like that there could be a little bit of a minor change to that regarding access that the developer is looking to have reviewed. And so if that happens, you know, it'll, it'll go back through that process a little bit. But we should be getting close to at least seeing some of that demolition and dirt work started. We're just waiting on a few little pieces here and there. Any other questions?
Doesn't look like, thanks James.
Thank you.
Later. Ally, did you have anything you want to share? Jim?
Yesterday, a representative at K Camp examined the roof of our salt shed. There'll be a report forthcoming about the damage from the hailstorm.
It's an asphalt roof, isn't it?
Shingles.
Asphalt composite shingles, yeah. Larry, did you have anything? Sorry, let me skip you.
I just wanted to let you know, we do have three candidates now for the open positions on our planning commission. I will bring those to you in the very, very near future, because we would like to get both people appointed and available for our December meeting.
Great.
And you said, we were talking yesterday at our meeting, that you have a, on the sixteenth, you're giving out some awards for some of the ones that's been there?
Yes, and I would like to have the chairman available on the sixteenth. I realize that that followed with the KAC meeting, but if you happen to be available, I would certainly appreciate getting you there. Well, the meeting starts at six thirty, but we'll do our business first and after closure of that. And I would like to have the awards presented to the commissioners that have served their terms.
All right, I'll be there. Anything from the clerk's office?
We had election last night. We got home, I was home by ten, so that's pretty good.
Yeah. All right. Commissioners' comments, board reports.
I can start, I've got a couple things. First off, I attended RCND meeting yesterday, and we had a guest speaker, Malcolm Jones, which is with the NRCS. He's district conservationist there, and he had a lot of good information, talked a lot about the programs that they have, a lot of different grants that they have available, and things they can do to help with everything from managing your grass to forestry, to clean water, to terracing, a lot of different things that are available. And he seems to have a lot of energy, and I think puts a lot of effort in trying to get people signed up into some of these programs. It was pretty good speech by him. And they talked about the partnership grant with Project Seventeen. Don reported on the Ellsworth and the bike program. Think he's, did he say he took three hundred bikes up or brought them back? I don't, one or the other, but.
They brought sixty-five back, but they took over three hundred and thirty down.
Back up, so they have quite a thing going on with Ellsworth on that adopt a bike thing. They approved donating two hundred dollars to Ellsworth for parts and things like that. They do that every so often, so Ellsworth can keep fixing these bikes for them. Talked about a Walmart facility grant that's gonna be coming available. Had an update on the KCPNL grant. Talked about the state RCND meeting on November the nineteenth in Wichita. Had a few repairs to approve due to the RCND truck, and that was pretty much the extent of that. That's the only meeting I've actually been to. If you want to go through the other meetings before I bring up my other thing, we can.
Other meetings?
I mean, what's the other commissioners?
Oh, gotcha, yeah, go for it Randy.
Okay, Monday night, I attended the city council meeting at Rantool. They were very grateful, Jim, and mentioned that the roadside Vermont, particularly, I think, had been mowed, but the deer population, and maybe some of the other roads in that area that have been mowed back away from the edge of the road. They got the number, well, number three fixed, but it's still not pumping very much water. They discussed their Halloween party and thought it went really well on the Monday, and then they approved some funds for their Christmas party in December. And had their elections, and I think there'll probably be some new people there in Rantool this year.
All right. Monday night, I attended the Princeton City Council meeting. They had a lot of discussion about maintenance on city property and buildings and their community center. The biggest item of discussion that really came up was a request from one citizen who wanted to, currently has a business downtown, who wants to move it to her residence. And it's, there's probably a lot of people that have, or worked out of their house, or have businesses within their house. However, this particular operation is a retail operation that she wanted to operate out of her garage. And they expressed that they had been in contact with Larry at planning and zoning and trying to work out some of those details. And they don't really have a zoning board anymore in Princeton, so it kind of falls back to the council to make those decisions. And they were trying to figure out the best way to do that and, you know, not open the door for everybody else to come in without going through this process. They also had concerns about another piece of property that they're dealing with that's close to being ready for condemnation, but they, the process is long, and it's difficult for these smaller communities without the necessary funds there to get the attorney legal process started, and it's a lot of expense that they, you know, you get started through this process to get somebody to fix a dilapidated structure that becomes unsafe to the public, and how they were gonna go about doing that and trying to set dates and make the process work for them. It's a, it's a struggle for these smaller communities. I don't know what the answer is yet, but I, I would hope that there's a better answer for them to maybe work together or to find some type of a process that would speed it up to make safer structures in these communities. That's the majority of what they discussed at their meeting.
Anything Roy?
No.
Nothing?
Well, I've got something, but I would.
Nothing you need to share?
Yeah, I had a concern, citizen talk about the intersection at Sand Creek and Old Fifty-Nine. Yeah, I had a concern, citizen talk about the intersection at Sand Creek and Old Fifty-Nine, used to have painted acceleration and deceleration lanes on both sides of the road, and when they got through painting this time, there, there is no painting of the turn lanes or deceleration lanes, I don't know if Jim had any ideas on that, or.
What intersection, Old Fifty-Nine and Sand Creek?
Fifty-Nine and Sand Creek.
Mainly had them in there for the, the rock trucks coming out of the core as far as acceleration and turning.
You wanna look into it, see if it's something the painting company missed?
We'll do.
Alright. Well, James told us about the F C D C meeting, so.
What I wanted to bring up is also a concern I have on a road, several months ago now, they, our crews patched a lot of chuck holes and so forth that we had on Old Highway Fifty, and I know at the time, Jim talked to us and said that we were looking for a milling machine, but we couldn't find one that would fit our skid loader, we're several months down the road, still hasn't been milled off and leveled, to me, we got winter coming along, I can't see that that would be a good thing, blading, our trucks blading those roads when the snow starts falling and with those parts that are so rough and sticking up some of them, I would think it'd start knocking the patch out of the places we fixed, but my concern is if we can't, as much roads that we have, we need to patch and stuff, if we can't, we don't have access to a milling machine, do we need to look at a outside company coming in and milling this, or do we need to look at purchasing a milling machine or just where we're at with that?
What options have you looked at so far, Jim?
Looked at a mill to fit on our skid steer.
Where have you tried to rent one, buy one, borrow the city, Ottawa's?
We were, we were looking to purchase one to fit on our skid steer, we find that the milling machines require high flow and our skid steer is low flow, we've also looked at the possibility of renting a skid steer with a mill on it, and as yet, we've not been successful in finding someone.
I wonder if we, I think you're gonna run into, with that skid steer not having high-flow hydraulics being a problem, did the last one have high flow?
I don't believe so.
Really? Just can't broom, you can't mill, you can't do most of the things you would want to do, so I wonder if maybe we need to look at trading that off and getting a machine that would work for you, but. Will you have something to report back as far as progress, or more options you've looked at Wednesday?
Are there contractors, Jim, that could come in and do this?
Yes.
Okay, and do you think they could get in here before?
I'm not sure how busy they are, the time to produce asphalt paving materials is probably behind us.
Do you want to at least call and talk to them and see what, what kind of info?
Yes, purely a function of weather.
Why don't you, why don't you, you have high, low flow, high flow hydraulics, I don't know what you're talking about, but why don't we look into what a skid steer with high flow hydraulics, like can you price those for us, give some idea, because this, this is not an isolated occurrence, I mean, this is something we're gonna deal with moving forward.
Of course, trading off the machine we have for a.
I mean, we may be well better off to put the money in trading that off and put that money into purchasing a skid loader that will do the stuff we need, instead of paying out that money to a individual contractors to come in and do this every time we need something milled or.
Well, we have a nice machine right now, so it oughta, I mean, the difference between the, what I do, one, I don't think it'd be a lot.
I think that probably is the best course of action, but I want to bring options so that we can see what it looks like.
Right. Do you have questions?
Yeah.
We're done with that, Adam?
I'm good.
Derek, on those slivers of land that you're talking about and that we don't have good deed information or can't find ownership of, are those the kind of properties that adjoining landowners might be quick deeded to, or if, if they were interested at least?
Yeah, and that's what we're talking about, I mean, we think these properties were created due to surveying errors, and they could be surveying errors that grew seventy-five years ago, but the things that we have talked about are notifying adjacent landowners because someone is taking care of almost all of these, and just notifying that person and you could quit claim, but for, the problem with that is you have to apply a title first and, and there's just, given how small it is versus like a quiet title action, that has me, I mean, it's not intellectually challenging, it just takes time, and so the, the question is what is the most cost efficient way to deal with these things, and so that's.
I just know that I have had one particular citizen reach out to me, I directed him to Larry's office and, because they thought they actually owned it, until somebody said, no, you need to go look at a map, and lo and behold, they, they didn't own it, but they were kind of, had a problem with all the people that were leaving their stuff there and parking on their, what they thought was their property they'd been maintaining, so.
Well, and there's just so many, it's, it's really kind of an interesting issue, I mean, you get into like adverse possession issues and that's one way we could get into these folks, but I, I will tell you that I, I think these have slipped through the cracks because if you look at the tax bill and the taxes these parcels generate, I mean, we're talking like two dollars in a year.
Well, for years, we didn't assess any value to them at all. And then there was a conceded effort about five, six years ago to start assessing them a dollar, just some nominal value, so inevitably, they'd become delinquent, and then we could put them through the process and clean up the, the map, because like you say, those little slivers, about a dozen of them throughout the whole county, have been there for fifty, a hundred, maybe since the beginning.
And the good news is, we're knocking out most of them, I mean, most of them, we got the title work and we are notifying the adjacent landowners and we're saying, come to this tax sale and buy this property for a dollar just so we can be done with it, and we've received a lot of indication that that's exactly what's gonna happen, but it's just the, the couple that, you know, if your abstractor can't figure out the, the chain of title, it's, it just, it becomes kind of a intellectual discussion on how you want to handle it, but I'll keep you apprised of where we're at on that, so.
This is the very issue that prompted the Attorney General's Office a few years ago to require a lot of surveying, where in the past, if properties were described by abstract officers and attorneys and so on, one person charged at one corner of the section, another person charges the other, it resulted in gaps and overlaps, and consequently, the Attorney General then established an opinion that all of these are less than a true fractional division of a quarter to quarter section had been surveyed, so since that time, we've seen very little of this, but prior to that, this is exactly what happened, and a lot of the little cities unfortunately have that, that same, same issue, so I give quite a number of calls and inquiries on these, you know, just about every week, but most of the time, we're able to effectively forego that, but there are some that, that aren't and it results in these tax things.
Anyone else for Commissioners' comments, board reports?
Offices are closed the tenth in honor of Veterans Day, we will canvass the election Monday morning, November thirteenth, I believe that's early, pull it up here at seven?
Thirty.
Seven thirty, down at the old courthouse. If there's nothing else, an ask for motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? We're adjourned.